What are the impacts? We're just, do you need me to go back? Well, I hate to do this for those who have sat through it, but this is, we need to have a complete public record. I'm sorry for everyone who's gonna hear it twice, including our, how much time is that on our attorneys? Tab? Right, okay, so we'll start again. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us. The primary purpose of tonight's workshop is to conduct an initial discussion of draft revisions to the village's short-term rental code, Chapter 100. And we have some housekeeping business at the end. The village's short-term rental law was adopted in July 2021, just last summer. Why are we undertaking a review of the law so soon after passing it? It's not working. So let's start out with how we got here. Only four applications for short-term rental operating permits were received and processed by the village clerk. Three qualified under the existing law, and those three permits were issued. We know this is but a fraction of the several dozen STRs that advertise and operate in the village on a variable basis that shifts throughout the year. It's clear that there's been something of an organized civil disobedience. Multiple owners and operators have refused to apply for permits, and that alone should tell us that the law doesn't work. But qualifications for permits isn't the only reason that folks aren't applying. Ten months into the life of Chapter 100, short-term rentals continue to operate without inspections and without paying application and permit fees that would be a source of much-needed revenue for the village. We know people are still renting rooms, apartments, and houses in the village, and contributing nothing to the multiple costs associated with tourism, wear and tear our infrastructure and public safety response. So what have the impacts been other than lost revenue? Well, since the law passed, we've had 20 complaints about STRs. Eighteen were made by one party against 18 various properties, two of which were actually operating lawfully under their permits. A second party reported a location that was on the first party's list. The complaints were all about illegal operation. None of them were nuisance complaints. So working with our legal counsel who's with us tonight, the village has done what it can to respond to the complaints. Notices have been issued to property owners and will be issued again if operation does not cease. There are fundamental flaws in the existing law that make further enforcement of it difficult. The operation of a short-term rental and compliance with health, safety, and building codes are code enforcement matters. However, after an initial inspection, the current law lays the burden of enforcement entirely on the Cold Spring Police Department. Violations of Chapter 100 are civil, not penal matters. Such violations are not within the enforcement purview of the police department. Our police officers cannot break on a door, break, knock on a door in response to a STR operating complaint, demand entrance for inspection, or collect evidence of a commercial rental operating at the site just for the sake of doing it. They have to have a court order to do that. They have to have a warrant. So our police don't have purview over normal building code violations. And we also don't live in a fascist state, so that's not gonna happen. So why was enforcement left to the police department in the first place? That's also a fairly simple answer. There was no engagement between the drafters of the law and our officer in charge as the law was being developed. So here we are. Yes, our police can respond to violations of our noise ordinance and our peace and good order ordinance, which are standalone chapters in our code. Frankly, we have not received these types of complaints related to rentals since the STR law was passed. Again, all complaints have been related to operation without permits. There's no question in my mind, and I'm pretty sure about my colleagues at the table, that short-term rentals need to be regulated in the village. We need to preserve all types of housing for families in the village. We need to protect community character. We need to ensure quality of life in our neighborhoods. And we need to know that rentals aren't fire traps or otherwise dangerous. And the village desperately needs to offset the infrastructure and staffing costs that are generated by overnight accommodation of visitors and tourists. So to get there, we need to modify and improve the existing law. So this is how the process will work. So we're at the beginning. The document that we're gonna be discussing tonight, and we will share on screen and there are paper copies for the audience. The document that we're discussing tonight is a draft. It is the result of work primarily undertaken by trustee Starbuck, who started with the existing code. She then worked with our previous code enforcement officer and the officer in charge to outline a realistic enforcement path. She also examined a number of successful regional codes that regulate similar Hudson Valley communities, including Irvington and Cornwall. Trustees reviewed her draft and made comments for incorporation. I then worked with the village attorney, our current code enforcement officer, Officer in Charge Burke, the village clerk, and the court clerk. They're all the essential folks who'll have to carry out the enforcement. So I worked with them to hammer out a workable process, which we have before us in proposal form tonight. So we're gonna begin the review with a really wide lens, and we'll identify and discuss proposed departures from the current Chapter 100 and attempt to come to consensus on those big-picture items. Depending on how much time those discussions take, we may or may not begin to review the specific exceptions text. So other than agreeing to concepts and draft texts, there'll be no voting tonight. Our attorney is with us virtually, and he can advise us in real time. That's another departure from previous practice. So this is intended as a discussion for us, observation by the public. But in another way, this process tonight and going forward is gonna be a radical departure from past practice. We've made the draft available for public review as we're discussing it. We'll screen share documents as we work on them, so the public can follow our conversation. Additionally, we believe the input from stakeholders sooner rather than later is important. We've invited residents to apply to serve on an ad hoc advisory committee to comment on proposed revisions. We have had a robust response to our invitation, and we'll keep the deadline open until Wednesday, May 25. We'll look to form a committee with a balance among points of view, including STR operators and neighbors. And we will ask the ad hoc committee for their input as we prepare the revisions for public hearing. We will have a public comment session tonight. Actually, we'll have two, but one after the primary topic. Comment on in-process code drafts was not permitted before, as I said. But I think it's fair to say that we believe we'll make better decisions as leaders when we have more input from the community. And we want to hear from the public as we work, not post facto. I wanna be very clear about tonight's public comment. I don't know how much they'll be. The board will listen and will answer questions when possible, but will not exchange and debate with any speaker. Comments will be strictly limited to three minutes per person. And if you can, please shape your comments so that it's unique and doesn't reiterate comments made by others. We'll use everyone's time wisely. So with that, late in the day today, Jeff can share on screen the sort of major topics of consideration. I did a little bit of a side-by-side of how the current code is structured and how Eliza's proposal is structured, so you have kind of a cheat sheet for comparison. And I would like to start sort of going through those big issues.
Did you wanna come?
One of the things that we need to do in here is rearrange it, so that the public doesn't have to crane the neck. Okay, so the first big topic. Why don't you talk us through the difference, Eliza, in terms of types of STRs?
Okay, so one of the big concerns was for people who live in the homes that they're renting and they stay there, they were concerned that they wouldn't be able to rent it long enough. And we're also concerned that people will buy second homes here and not be present and short-term rent them for half the year. So we shifted the structure a little bit and made a hosted short-term rental permit that gives you much more of the year to, if you're staying in the house and you're present. And we didn't see any real concern there, because people aren't throwing parties if the owners are in the building. And we took the unhosted piece out of that. And alternatively, we provide a second type of short-term rental, which is a short permit that you can apply for that's 14 days long, and that can be an unhosted. So for instance, on West Point weekend, this is off while I talk, on West Point, like, event weekends, people can go on vacation and rent out their home, but they just get one permit, and it's 14 days long, or up to 14 days. You could do it for a week. And you just apply for it once. So that was kind of the departure with the structure of the permit. There's two different kinds of permits now, whereas before there were more.
Right, and among the discussion in the previous iteration, there were, there was debate about how much impact a hosted STR has in a neighborhood with an accountable owner on property who has to face their neighbors in the morning versus an absentee. So I guess the first thing is, on this very simple topic, this somewhat large departure of pulling off short-term, excuse me, unhosted short-term rentals as a possibility and exclusively allowing hosted short-term rentals and one-time for people who go away on vacation or use a house for a weekend.
Have a question. One time per calendar year, one time per quarter, one time?
So I think that's up for debate, because personally, I think that you should be able to reapply for it. You know, and it's, it's not, you know, at a certain point, if you're using it more than, I don't know, like, two months where you're paying the same price as the other one. But so I think there should be a limitation on how many times you can reapply for it. But I would personally, you know, be open to allowing someone to apply like up to three times for it throughout the year. But I would love to hear what the other trustees know.
So my feeling is that that gets long. Three times gets you to 42 days. And if you're renting your house out that long, you should be applying for a regular short-term rental permit, I think.
People go on vacation three times a year.
Sure, but I would say no more than, I would, I would make it a finite number. And as you said, you can break up your weeks. But if you're going past 30 days, in my view, that becomes a standard short-term.
Oh, it was not my understanding that you could but get one short-term, one, you know, the 14-day, and break it up into two weeks throughout the year. Like, it was my understanding it's for one booking, one segment of time. So you have up to 14 days to use it. You tell the village, I'm going on vacation this, these two weeks, or from this time to this time, I would like to apply for this one-time-use permit. So that allows us to sort of nail it down and keep it controlled. Whereas if they can use it, you know, I'll use it this week and I'll use it Christmas, then it gets a little bit more flexible, or, I mean, it's harder to control that then.
That's a, that's a different point. My point is about the extension, being able to renew it twice in a year, so that you end up, in effect, having 42 days available as a short-term rental in total.
For the purposes of, to use West Point as a good example, because there's just not enough rooms in the area, generally speaking, for that. Somebody wants to rent their house out for a week, West Point. Would their only option then be a hosted? Or could, could those, I mean, could it just be a number of days somebody could do? Like this vacation thing, like a week here and a week there?
I'm okay with, I'm okay with that structure where you get 14 days total to use. I don't think we should be policing how people use the 14 days, but I wouldn't want to be renewing 14 days multiple times without having it classified as a rental. And in that case, it's an unhosted rental, so it doesn't.
Doesn't matter to the village to know when those days are happening? Right, like, if it's, if it's the two weeks that you have in mind, then they know when the, when the permit comes in, that it, for June 1st to June 14th. But if it's anytime, then they get the permit in January, and they're like, well, I'll save them. I'm able to rent it, and then, and then. But what do you have to tell them? Which, it would be a lot to track. So knowing that matters. It could be complicated to be flexible.
Yeah, that's, my goal is to, is to hold people accountable. Like, we're going on vacation at this time. We'd like a permit.
Up to three one-week permits per year. You can run them together or break them apart.
That seems like a reasonable compromise.
Actually, yeah.
Maybe they wanna do 10 and 11, maybe they wanna do.
But I also think that that's better in the sense of, like, I mean, none of, I don't care where you're going on vacation, you know what I mean? But if you want a permit for that amount of time, you fill out the paperwork, you get it done, and how you, how you use it, you have, and whether it's, yeah, Christmas or whatever, like.
If we have the dates on the books with the permit, then if a neighbor calls and complains and says, you know, my neighbor got that permit, but they've been going on vacation five times a year, and then we can look and say, okay, they're only for these times, and.
I guess the only, the complication with that, though, is like, obviously, things change, things happen that you don't anticipate. And so what, like, what if you apply, I don't know, for whatever that week, the June 1st to June 14th scenario? I mean, you don't use it, then you have to get another permit for another time, or can you?
Yeah.
Like, yeah.
Say, I didn't use it, or, you know, can I use it another time?
Yeah, I mean, I feel like we're not flexible. Jeff's not that mean. Just like, you know, come in and be like, all right, our whole house looked at COVID, and we couldn't go on vacation. We had to cancel our Airbnb period. We'd like to reschedule it for this time. That seems reasonable. Do we need to put that into the code?
Well, are we ask, is your intent to ask people when they file for the application for the dates that they're gonna use the one-time permit? Because if someone applies at the, say, the beginning of the year, knowing that at some point during the year they're gonna go away, but don't know the dates.
Like, whether to require it, what, in the first application?
Well, so there is another point is, like, when people can apply for these things? I mean, if this is a permit that you pay per use, or pay when you need it, provided, everyone doesn't have to apply in January, and this is a finite amount. I mean, if we're only providing 30, then everyone will grab them and, right. So if we're not doing that, if we're, you know, allowing people to apply for them as they need them, then I don't see.
So it would be a different, a different timeline for, for application and approval. It could potentially be a different timeline for application and approval for this type than for the hosted, regular, short-term rentals, so that there is that flexibility.
Yeah.
That's actually, that actually seems smart. So, so do we, we like Catherine's compromise idea of three, up to three weeks, and yours of apply as you use it.
I like it, but next question, yeah, does it require inspections?
That was something that I think should be discussed, because it seems like a huge burden if you're only going for one time, you know, for seven days. But if you're planning on doing three for 30 days, then it's, you know, it's a bigger deal.
So I'm just gonna look, I have to remind myself by looking back at the existing code.
So can I just ask a question for clarification? So it sounds like you're going to allow a one-time permit multiple times within the permit period, which may be up to two years? Is that what I'm understanding?
With, that's not deciding it. We're talking about that possibility.
Okay.
Do you have any concerns about that?
No, I mean, I read the draft as just, you know, a one-time permit for one-time rental for up to 14 days, only once during the permit period. That's how it was originally drafted and how I read it. But now it looks like you wanna provide people, I guess, multiple one-time permit periods within the same, whatever it is, two-year permit.
Well, that is what we've been talking about.
Okay.
What are you, what are you hesitating about, Catherine?
Well, I mean, we have to decide on what the permit period is.
Right.
I mean, if it's a one-year period, it's easier to deal with than a two-year period.
So why don't we, why don't we table this portion and come back and have that conversation? So I'm gonna, I'm gonna sort of go in order, and we'll hit that portion. There were, one of the things that made a huge amount of complexity in the original version is that short-term rentals were limited to 33 hosted and 16 unhosted. And now we are, and that would have been controlled by a lottery and by a linear footage limitation. So your number, your number would be pulled. The first person was the only person who had really any flexibility, because from there, every person pulled, every applicant pulled after that would have to be delineated and be more than 300 feet away. So you were automatically knocking out access to a land, to a land right, to everyone around the first person who was drawn. There really isn't a way to fairly give out a limited number of permits, with, you know, you're either gonna have people banging down the door and shoving each other on day one, or you get into this incredibly complex lottery that introduces chance. And, you know, among the discussions that have been had is, is it, is it right? And John, this is a question that should, really should have come to you, is, and I believe it did in some, in some way, is, should, should a land use law be available by chance?
Right, well, it did come up, and actually, I had concerns when it was first raised, but I checked with NICOM, and they actually said, you know, that legally, they didn't think it was a problem, the lottery system. I had my own reservations, but there were a couple of other municipalities that had adopted some type of lottery or cap. In fact, if you had a cap, I think you pretty much had to have a lottery. So therefore, it was more of a chance than than anything else. So there are a couple of municipalities that do use the lottery system. I did talk to the folks at NICOM, and, you know, they didn't necessarily endorse it, but, you know, they said it seemed legit. I had my own reservations, but, you know, given the fact that NICOM was okay with it and other municipalities had adopted it, you know, the prior board, you know, wanted to move forward with the, with the lottery system. And, you know, I guess the intent was to try to cap the number of, of short-term rentals within the village. But it's very difficult. You know, it's a very difficult task, the way it's set up.
It's a very difficult task, and it also is very staff-intensive. Go ahead.
I think that if you write the code appropriately, you can limit the use and the number of applicants based on what's allowable. So just by cutting out unhosted for all-year-round use or for the long-term use, we are already cutting out probably a portion of the STRs in operation in the village. And if, you know, from what I've been tracking through the past, I don't know, three to four years of STR usage in the village, I've never seen more than 55 at a time. And what, I don't know how legitimate Airbnb's quote was, but we have a total of 100 users through the year, so.
And that's, that's unhosted, unhosted, right.
Yeah, that's, that's a combination of hosted and unhosted.
Any way to know how that broke out, or?
No, I don't think they're gonna give us much data there. But that's, that's where Granicus would have helped us, is to give us a better sense of how they're being used and how often, and how. But we don't have that data. But I, my, my belief and the reason why I propose that we get rid of these limitations and lotteries is because when you write the code in a way that is reasonable and people can apply, but it still protects the things that we're trying to protect, it works automatically to knock out the ones that don't actually suit our village's needs.
Right, that, that's an excellent point, because I had another municipality that kind of focused a little bit on the off-street parking. You know, let's make sure that these Airbnbs or short-term rentals, you know, have enough off-street parking to support the use. And that was, honestly, that was a good way to knock out a lot of potential candidates, you know, to ensure there were, you know, enough spots.
When I first moved to the village, nobody could turn their house into anything because they used fire code. They said you had to have sprinklers. And nobody was gonna put sprinklers in the house, so nobody did anything. That, it was sort of like, nobody could qualify.
That would be a state uniform building code issue, though. That's not us, John, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, well, it's a long time ago. It was a long time ago when, you know, it was different.
Yeah.
But, um, you, I mean, I think you guys have that language in there, and I think a lot of short-term rental laws do say, you know, you have to meet, you know, state building code requirements, whatever they may be, whether even it's for a single-family home. And I think that's part of the inspection. At least in another municipality I did, that was part of the review, was to make sure everything was kind of up to code, even for a single-family home. And then there were some extra added things, like having maps and, you know, because people that are renting aren't, you know, when there's an emergency, you know, they're not fully thinking, right? And, you know, they might not know how to get out of the house. So there were certain, certain things, I think it was in Cornwall. Cornwall and Hudson had a bunch of stuff regarding the fire safety and building code concerns. And that was through their work with the inspect, the building inspector at that time.
So my concern all along, throughout all of discussions, was primarily focused on unhosted. And not allowing those pulls away a lot of my concern, because we are a small village and people do keep an eye on what their, what their neighbors do. And when there are complaints, we hear them, and Jeff, when there are complaints about, just about anything, we hear them. So that, that level of accountability is, I think, meaningful. And I appreciate that that was part of your proposal that you pulled out. Unhosted. In doing that, though, you recommended expanding the number of days of operation from 90 to 180. Wanna talk us through?
Yeah, that was because of the concept of if someone's in the house, they live there, they're staying, and their guests are present and they are present. You know, and this is hearing from families who, you know, may have had some, like, lost their jobs, you know, had a physical issue, something happened where short-term rental was something they were depending on for their income. This is a hardship situation, not necessarily typical. And it's not our duty to solve other people's hardships by any means. But I didn't see the limitation of 90 days as important if it's somebody who's still living there 365 days, more or less.
I see in some of the other codes that they're using 180. I think that's sort of a, almost a standard for hosted. for, for hosted.
And we don't get, we haven't gotten many complaints for hosted. I don't believe so.
I'll have to look at the one that was posted, I mean, Kathleen said two complaints.
Yeah.
One which encompassed 18 properties, of which of those 18, three did have permits.
Right. And we don't know of those, what was hosted or?
I'll have to go back and look in and look at the list.
Of the, when, when I think back of discussions of this topic over the last couple of years, there were, there has been primarily one property, it was unhosted. That was a source of a lot of complaints for noise and parties and et cetera, but it has not been, it has not been a large-scale problem. I mean, that, that, there was a lot of panic and anxiety about short-term rentals and discomfort about people who don't live in the neighborhood being in the neighborhood. But it hasn't played out in complaints related to short-term rentals. I mean, hosted. Again, because of that, of that accountability. Do you have thoughts on the number of days?
My first instinct is to say that it seems like a lot, but I don't know. Because I'm trying to imagine like a scenario, like a scenario where that person isn't then like a renter in the home or is like your roommate, you know, I mean, that's a lot of duties to be.
Well, it's never one person. I mean, so this, imagine, imagine this scenario. Somebody lose their, loses their spouse and they're raising the kids alone. And they don't have a career and they need to be on the floor and available. And they have one spare bedroom in their house. And they can rent that out to support their family and help them get through, or they can sell their house and move. You know, those might be their two choices. So 90 days will help, but 180 will help more. So this is, again, this is like, in, there are people who are struggling here and are making their way through by renting out their spare bedroom. And if they're living in the house and they have different guests on different weeks of the year, it, I don't know, it doesn't bother me, but that's the scenario where somebody might need that. If you're living in the house and you have people coming in and out 180 days in the year, that's a pain in the butt as well. So I don't think that most people would do that anyway, but, you know, every, every case is different. I don't know that it's for us to judge that, I think.
If, if you break it up, if somebody's gonna, I mean, taking the hardship out of it and making it a business, which for some people that it is just a straight-up business and there's not, again, no judgment, whether it's one or the other. But 52 weeks is 104 weekends. Now you put in those three-day weekends or you put somebody who just wants a off-time four days. You know, so you need more than 90. I don't know that you quote-unquote need 180. 180 would be a very busy Airbnb.
Yeah, and I think for, for me personally, 180 is too much. It's half the year, almost half the year.
120?
I don't know that I have a right idea in mind and, you know, this will be part of us.
Is this something, yeah, we talked to the committee about because they'll bring perspectives to the table about the feasibility and reality of running an Airbnb that none of us necessarily know.
Because you're gonna have people that are part of the committee that actually do it and they know how many days they are doing it. So they can, you know, kind of.
Have a better gauge.
A better gauge.
I think I'd also, I would want to hear from the committee of neighbors of like, yeah, okay, I'm okay with like cars coming in and out on like 10 weekends, but like every, you know, 180 days of visitors, it feels like a lot or something like that. Yeah, okay, the sound of the.
But it's not all.
I, I would be.
Yeah, I, I like the idea of hearing from the committee.
That's the number.
Yeah, that number's up in the air. I mean, can we maybe, can we agree that that would be the outermost limit of?
Oh, for, for me, absolutely, outermost.
Like I wouldn't, I mean, I'm sure someone was, there's gonna be someone who's gonna say more than 180, but I think.
No more than?
Yeah. Or up to, and then wait, or whatever the, whatever the language is, but.
Yeah, the idea is to set the absolute limits.
Yeah.
This is, this is your structure.
Yeah. And in the past, in past discussions, there was concern about, well, how do you, how do you, how do you even track that? How do you track that with, and this is again where the software will be important and useful.
Right, Granicus would allow us to know whether someone had used it for 120 days of the year or 240.
All right, so we've addressed, we've addressed lottery, we've addressed permit eligibility.
Did, uh, everybody agree to the no limit of the number of hosts and let the rules sort of restrain it instead?
I'm comfortable with that.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, and we, we need to come back to consideration of the, the quote-unquote one-time short-term, the vacation short-term. And no lottery, no lottery, we don't have lottery at this stage. No measuring sticks. No measuring sticks. So Eliza, the, it was a one-year permit period. You proposed a no more than two years. How does that work?
So my thinking was that we would let people apply throughout the year rather than only apply for your permits in January, because again, life situations happen and suddenly you need Airbnb. And it could be in January, it could be in August, it could be any time of the year. So also having them all come in at once and having the inspections have to all happen at once doesn't make sense for workflow. So having it spread out through the year was my thinking on that, just for management purposes. And I had seen in another code that, you know, instead of having to follow up on every single date, like, okay, that person applied in August 28th, we've got to follow up with them. It just all expires the following, December 31st.
But if you apply and pay for a permit toward the end of the period.
So it's the year after.
Oh, the year after.
Yeah, so that's why it's up to two years. So if you're smart, you apply in January, then you get two years. But if you, you know, apply in August, you get August until the following December.
Why can't we just make them 12-month permits, period?
I mean, we could do that too. It just.
So do you rolling then?
How does that work?
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna ask the same question, just like any other permit, why not, instead of having set times to file the applications, whether it's quarterly or yearly, just like any other permit, somebody could walk in, apply for the permit, and if they meet the criteria, you know, they get issued a permit or whether it's a year or two years, you know, that's up to you guys. But I, I think, you know, the old code had that specific requirement where everybody had to apply at a certain time, again, because there was a cap in a lottery system. But in this case, you don't have a cap. You don't have a lottery system. So, you know, I don't see why somebody just couldn't walk in and apply whenever they want to. And then if they're issued the permit, it would be again, a year or two, depending on what, what's ever decided.
You're some data issuance.
It's different than how built, China, this building permit, building permit is good for two years of the data issuance.
Yeah.
Probably makes it.
Simpler, right?
Well, it removes the intensity of everything being done.
Yeah.
You know, getting a swarm of people in January applying with the hope, so it spreads it out, makes the, well, it makes it more manageable now, but certainly makes it, so we're not dealing with a situation where, you know, we know every January and February is lost to.
Yeah. Yeah, that was, that was a.
Processing applications and.
When we know what we do then.
I, yeah, exactly. I, I like this. Actually, I think the simpler the better.
Okay, so then should we stick to one year or two year? One.
Will you say one?
I think it, what I would say to that is it would be better for me to answer after we talk about what the cost is.
Yeah, the fees would make a difference.
Well, another thought that I had in mind with that is annually, you have an opportunity for an inspection every time. So if someone is not, not in compliance with the fire code or an egress code, you know, whatever it might be, we know, we know sooner. It's more of, it's more work for the permit holder to apply for once a year. Standard, when you think about standard rental housing, inspections, that's every three years.
Yeah, I, that was also what I was thinking about in terms of, like, it all starts over again in the sec, every other year, December or the end of December, January. Because I feel like code inspection every year is a lot. Having the code inspector in your house every year seems a lot.
It's a business.
Yeah, but I don't have the code inspector come into my business every year. It gets done once. You know, so it could be, you know, like, with the short term, people are getting a, a week-long permit or however long it ends up being, like, they're not gonna have it inspected every time. You know, maybe once a year, but again, I, I just feel like once a year is a lot of inspections for any building, like, it's excessive for any.
Except for, except for the rare case and I, you know, we don't know how many of these cases exist in the village at this point. Except, I, I myself have rented a short-term rental that had very dangerous electrical problems and was filthy, you know, we didn't know till we got there. And that, you know, that was a bad host. That bad host is gonna get weeded out, hopefully in other ways via this code. I just think about opportunity to capture, to capture that, to capture a bad situation, an unsafe situation.
But these are now hosted.
These are now hosted.
So.
But there's still publics, I mean, if you're going to rent out a, whether it's a room or a whole house, there are public safety issues that need to.
Well, the health comes in my place, you know, two-plus times a year, unannounced.
How about hotels? How often do they get inspected?
Food, same. I don't know about, I don't know what they, and water samples. They come and take water samples two, three times a year. I, I'm, I'm always saying you're dealing with public safety and, you know, and people coming and going, it's different.
I think we should ask the ad hoc committee on that. I, I just think maybe once every two years makes more sense to me.
What did you see on our code, with our policies?
If you can talk about it, we didn't go into how often it need to be done. I don't, I don't recall.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, yeah.
What's our, what's our, I think Catherine and I are, are leaning on a, toward one year. Do we have, do you two have a view? You want to talk about fees first?
Well, I, as another thing to, to consider.
Yeah, I went into it thinking of the other year because it was a two-years and it felt like, well, then that's a little bit the management of it just felt easier, the burden of it felt easier, but I'm not, I would be interested in an open set. Better understanding that.
Because I also think that if, depending on what we're, what it would, the fee would be, we have to build in the fact that we, whether they're inspecting every year or every two years, the cost of that of that work getting done and all the residual costs to, to build into that, to that number. So I think that's, I mean, I'd be interested to hear how people felt about it, but at the same time, I think there's like a, there's a public health issue and there's a safety issue and there's a management of finding out if any of those violations or issues exist that we should consider in the price, the cost.
Did the building inspector, did he mention it? Speak with them about that?
I didn't speak about that in particular, whether it was, whether he had any thoughts on one or two years, but it's a conversation we could have.
Yeah, they might have like advice, like this is reasonable or this is necessary.
Or is it possible?
Yeah, right, so they might be good to advise on that.
Go ahead.
Back to the building permit comparison. Every permit requires inspections. So as you look at length, you know, whether it's one year to two year, every time you issue the permit, issuance of the permit, an inspection has to be a requirement of it. I would think, John, I mean, from a, to protect the village, I think, yeah, we would want to require an inspection with each permit. So whether you do a year or two.
You're still gonna want to do the. It's the question of how frequently. And John's nodding over there.
Yeah, you should have an inspection as part of, you know, prior to issuing to the permit.
So so turning to cost, the, the application fee was previously $50 for all. Eliza was proposing $100. This is just, is just to have your application looked at, right? To cover the cost of Jeff processing the application, making, you know, assisting with the person getting to the code enforcement office, et cetera. It's $100 for a regular hosted short-term rental and 75 for one-time short-term rental. One thought I had was keeping the one-time short-term application fee lower so that, so that folks are more likely to come in, like dropping it by half, you know, to 50.
Yeah, I guess my, I was, I started out thinking that the one-time short-term rental has to pay that application fee the first time. And then following up, like, if, if we're letting them apply three times, each following time is like $25, so that.
So an additional fee each time.
Yeah, because the paperwork's already done, like, they've already submitted everything. They're just saying, these are the new dates, they need a new permit, unless something's changing dramatically.
Aren't they just re-upping their permit? They're not reapplying.
It's like a renewal, sort of.
Okay, but then you pay the big fee. You don't pay the application fee twice.
Okay, so that, yeah, I mean.
The permit that.
You pay the permit fee twice or annually, but you don't pay that. Once you've applied and you have a permit, you're renewing the permit, you're not reapplying, you're applying, unless you take it off, you know, market for two years or something like that, then I would say you have to put a new application.
Within that period of, whether it's a year or two years, whatever inspection terms are, one application fee makes sense.
So you would do, you would suggest a, let's say it's 12-month period, short-term, and the board were to decide that you could apply once and use it over three different weeks. You would take care of inspection and all of that in the first ti, in the first instance. And then the second times, which is second and third time would just be notification.
Right.
I'm asking, I'm not saying.
Oh, yes, notification, not, not a new permit each time? Not the application, but just the permit.
Just the issuing of the permit?
Yeah.
You can do it that way.
The permit renewal rather than a full new application.
I mean, I, if you're gonna apply, but if the number is three, but if that's the number that we're using just for sake of conversation, you should have to renew each time. You don't have to do the application again, but I think that we need to.
So.
Pay a fee.
So that, again, I would advocate for keeping, we need to cover the cost of processing the application, but I would advocate for keeping it as low as we can to encourage people to actually do it.
So do you think?
I mean, part, part of that is a question for Jeff in terms of cost. You worked a bit on tabulating what you thought was an accurate cost of processing an application. Now, you were also looking then at lottery and everything else. But the building permit application is what is 75, 85?
Depends on the work.
Oh, because that, that's square footage, but then HTR. Or a planning board application, what are those fees?
So puts it for building permits. So puts it for a building permit. If it's just, if you wanna change your windows, there's a seventy-five-dollar application fee. If you're doing interior construction, it's a hundred and fifty-dollar application fee, permit. Now, for exterior work, there's no additional fees for the permit. For interior construction, there is, it's based on square footage.
So how about board applications, H D R B, Z B A?
They each have their own separate fee.
And they're, they're at different rates.
Yep.
Each of them is eighty-five, right? Or was it eighty-five?
That's for public.
That's for public care.
Thirty dollars application fee, fifty for the others.
Alright, so that's, so that's, that's a calculus that we need to do is what would be, what would we need to process that kind? Of applications, make sure that we're covering the cost of Jeff's work and the inspecting officer's work. So on, so.
Numbering question.
Numbering question. And then in terms of actually getting the permit, like when you get your, your building permit issued. The numbers, I, I was skeptical about the numbers that were. Passed in the last round because I felt that, that they should not only be. They should also be offsetting the, the, the impact of the use. I had proposed a tourism impact fee be built in. And that was, that was rejected. But I think that the numbers that you've moved toward, Aliza, we were, we were at a hundred dollars for a one-time. And two-hundred-and-fifty for unhosted and hosted. You're proposing two-hundred-and-fifty for the one-time and seven-hundred for the hosted.
Yeah, but if we're cutting the one-time down to one.
Right, you would.
I would cut that in half to two-fifty or two-twenty, one-twenty-five, pardon me, per unhosted. One-time use. Does everyone, is that reasonable?
Yep.
I mean, cuz you're not, if you're really renting it out for four days, it's not even worth it at that point. Like, that's an expensive fee. That's why the two-week was better, because then it was more reasonable to charge.
That's, that's.
A larger amount.
I think we need to get some, we need to get some feedback from folks who actually do that kind of, I personally have no sense of. I mean, I know it could be thousands of dollars that come in over a weekend, down the onto West Point weekend.
Turn the house.
Turn the house, yeah.
And then.
But if it's hosted, it's gonna be smaller. Just thinking of like, if we're only doing hosted, you're. You don't have that many bedrooms.
That category can be unhosted, yeah.
Okay, but it, but I guess that it is worth thinking about for the hosted ones, that it's generally, you don't get as much for like. One bedroom in a house. You can charge more for, you get the whole house.
Right, which is the other reason why the one-hundred-and-eighty-day limit makes more sense. If, if we're going for seven-hundred dollars. The other thing we, we have to consider is not only like tourism costs building into this. But Granicus is gonna cost us about two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a person per permit. I mean, on average, just based on the projections of the numbers that we have. So, you know, that number is built in to that seven-hundred-dollar hosted fee. So that should be, you know, considered, and that was kind of part of the two-hundred-and-fifty thing too, but they have a less, smaller impact.
How did you get to, to, to seven-hundred?
I took the amount of the services that we were looking at, oh, to seven-hundred. So it, it took the amount of the services from Granicus and add the, added that on. The guy from Granicus had said, yeah, he tested.
No, I took his last name, first initial.
Alright, he had said that fees tend to be. He, he gave a percentage of how much he tends to be of the annual amount used.
Oh, okay, so you're working from that as well.
Yeah, yeah, so it's taking different percentages based on projections that Airbnb had given. And that he had provided based on the data that he, he had collected in his one, you know, view in February.
That would be good for us too, now that we have at least temporarily buddied up with Phillips Town to compare their expense. What, what they would estimate an expense would be to what we had considered previously when we just had Charlotte.
Her, right, inspections.
Support staff and.
Right.
And, and fire inspector and.
Right, all of those are, I took Charlotte's fees and count, really calculated them into, based on what she told me, and added that into the fee price as well.
I'm comfortable with this range. I think it's a much more realistic range. Your, the point that you made about. Granicus fees for. I don't know how, I don't know how often we're gonna be using Granicus as part of the one-time short-term rental process. Right, cuz that's a little less, that's, that's less critical, I think, to track over time.
Well, I mean, it will let us know whether people are honoring their permits or not.
That's true.
I mean, you could apply for a permit and be like, I did it, and then do it that weekend, and then do it again, and try and get away with it. So Granicus would allow us to know how many days of the year someone hosted.
So maybe we do need to build back, build back from that number and look at, this is, this is the cost. From a regulatory standpoint of the one-time short-term rentals, what makes sense in terms of value for the permit purchaser? In terms of time.
Right, it needs to be kind of balanced, the two.
We're not, these aren't things we're gonna result tonight, obviously, cuz we need to get more information, but we're talking through. Okay, any other discussion on fees? Okay, this one's a big one. The allowable zones in the current code are R1 and I1. I1. In theory, once we get through one-thirty-four, I1 won't exist anymore. It will be replaced with some iteration of a mixed-use. Zone, but for the moment, what we're talking about under I1 is largely the Marathon Parcel, some parcels on Rock. What am I missing? Look at that. No, that's B, B, or B1, yeah.
B1, there's a couple on Fresh Street. Everything north of Northern Avenue.
Oh, right, 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 right. Sort of in the new studio out. So it's a small district, but that is one of the districts that, that will be under consideration as we do one, one, chapter one-thirty-four, as we finalize that. But for now, we are working with, the identified zones we're working with are R1 and I1. Aliza's proposing an expansion into the B1. There are a number of things to consider here. Including the fact that our B1, which is largely Main Street and Chestnut.
Lower Main.
Yeah, Lower Main includes. Includes a lot of, includes a chunk of homes, not just commercial buildings, not just apartment buildings. So, so talk through.
Yeah, so I, I thought that B1 should be included. And again, because we've written the code so specifically, it cuts out anyone who's, you know. Renting an apartment above a shop on Main Street and wants to get a permit for Airbnb, that, that would not be allowed unless it's the building owner. Who owns that apartment and hosting in their apartment, or doing a one-time permit that way. But because of the way it's been written, including B1, really, I don't see why it makes any difference. And it's more fair to homeowners in that district, of which there are plenty.
So we'd still be talking about owner-occupied units, whether it's an apartment or a house, right? And it, it rules out the scenario of. An LLC owning a building and, well, and that gets ruled out in a, in a number of ways, right? Cuz we have, we have a prohibition on LLCs unless a fifty-one percent owner lives in the structure. So that rules out, that rules out that scenario of renting out a floor of a building. Discussion on the thought of B1?
I think there are a number of units on, on Main Street that, that qualify under the way we're restructuring. That, I think it's a good idea.
I think, I mean, the fact that all of Lower Main wouldn't be allowed to participate is a big deal. There's a lot of, you know. Single-family homes there where they would have extra bedrooms. And I agree, I'm not worried about losing apartments because of the owner-occupied piece. Yeah, that's an interesting point, because in the initial iteration. If there was unhosted. My thinking about this. It's complicated.
Unhosted, getting rid of unhosted solves a lot of problems.
Yeah, yeah, unhosted takes housing stock out.
Yeah, right, that's.
That's what we're trying to, you know. People to hustle in the village and have multiple homes to pay for themselves.
Right.
Yeah, so in, and I agree that that seems very unfair to then not, like, exclude an entire portion of our community. Because of the district.
All of Lower Main is B1?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's huge. I mean, that's, that's a lot of residential space.
Yeah, yeah.
So. Unless we wanna rezone.
Well, we'll have the discussion about, about how the medical shift. But was it anticipated that any, I don't remember, anticipated B1 changed?
I don't remember about, for Lower Main.
Well, it, it doesn't matter cuz we'll get to that, look at that stage, where we have to talk about the code as it exists now. John, any thoughts on B1? Are you awake and with us?
Yeah, no, I'm here. So I, I think. I think somebody had said the fact that, you know, you still have to be owner-occupied. I think that nullifies any concerns about all of these apartments, all of a sudden, turning into. You know, short-term rentals and then therefore losing some affordable, more affordable housing in the village.
Okay, New York Magazine just had an article, I sent you this screenshot, they now have more short-term rental units than they have apartments available in Manhattan.
That's crazy.
That's not cold spring.
Yeah, no, well, we don't want it to become cold spring.
Hey, Jeff, can you scroll for that? People can see the rest of the, yeah. Now, we're all wishing that we'd gotten a slightly bigger screen, right?
Okay.
Yes, that's two thousand dollars. Fifteen hundred would have been well worth it.
But that, we talked about.
We've addressed application yearly versus quarterly by saying, treat it as a permit, like a regular billing permit. Nothing changes about inspections that happened under the code enforcement officer before. It continues to. What changes in a dramatic way is the enforcement. It moves away from the police department and toward. Into the hands of a combination of code enforcement and village court. And the, the reason, there, you know, there, there are examples of codes. John, I think Cornwall is like this, where. The issue comes before the Board of Trustees, but I, I get concerned about. The arbitrary nature of having elected officials. Appearing. Yeah, and, you know, and, and the legislative branch shouldn't be acting as the judicial branch. So under this scenario. Code violations. Building code violations would be issued a, a summon, a notice and a summons, and then a court date would be set. If there are noise or peace and good order concerns that get reported to the police, the police also issue a summons to the court. So it gets to a, a more neutral third party. River's cool with that?
It looks like the appeals process still comes to a.
Meaning the appeal, if you are agreed by the structure of the code. Right, I wanna come in and say, I don't like the way this code is written because it creates a hardship for me here. That comes to the legislative body, but violations go to the judicial. How are you feeling about that, John? Did we, did we manage to nail it this time?
Well, my, my only concern is there's a lot of language where you're saying the village justice can do this, the village justice can do that. I mean, the village judge is gonna do whatever he or she feels is necessary. So it seemed like there was a, and I think you guys scaled it back a little bit from the version I saw last week or a few days ago. But I, I think it just needs to be cleaned up, and I think you're going for a more traditional approach where the code enforcement officer. Is, is, is enforcing. I still think you should, you know, I, I still think there's numerous options that should be available. Not just going to local justice court. That's kind of one potential tool. But, you know, I, I think a code enforcement officer should also be given the ability to do an administrative enforcement. And, you know, the village should also have the ability to, to take their own, you know, seek their own, go to Supreme Court. And, and seek an injunction, just so that you guys have various tools. Because every situation is different and unique and may, you know, maybe not going to village justice court is always the best. I mean, you have to show, you know, beyond a reasonable doubt that, you know, they're violating the code. As opposed to an administrative enforcement, you know, it's, it's a little less of a hurdle to, to overcome. And, and, and to show that, you know, to, 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 you know, to. It's a less of a hurdle when you have an administrative enforcement action, so.
Example of that?
An example of administrative enforcement, where the building is, what's that?
An example of administrative act, act, sorry, what did you say, administrative enforcement?
Yeah, when the building inspector issues a notice of violation. And then, so the. The, the, the property owner would have a certain amount of time to, to challenge that notice to the, you know, before the Z B A. And then, you know, the Z B A would then, you know, interpret the code and, and to figure out. You know, whether, whether they are violating the code or not.
That was actually a conversation that Jeff and I had with, with Greg Wonder the other days. If we, if we wanted to extend capacity for Z B A to address variances in this code. In the same way that when the fence chapter was, the fence and walls chapter was separated from one-thirty-four. The, the Z B A was empowered in cross-reference to be able to continue to do variances for fences. So I assume that it would work the same way under chapter one-hundred, John, that we would.
Yeah, you have to, yeah, you have to specifically reference and authorize the Z B A to interpret this separate code. Cuz under the state statute, the Z B A is only empowered to interpret zoning codes. But as a municipality, you can have the Z B A interpret other codes. You just have to, in your local law, you have to specifically say. We're authorizing or empowering the Z B A to interpret this code.
Okay, that, that seems like, to me, that seems like the middle ground in addition to what we've got. How do other folks feel about that?
You're on the.
Yeah, I know, no, I'm just. So it's not a variant, it's not a variant, it's giving the.
An interpretation.
Which I've only, we only took that once, I think, you know.
It's not so frequent.
When I was there, but it's. Yeah, I mean. I think it's helpful to spread out those, I think, I think it's helpful to spread out the responsibilities of this. It feels like it's a lot on a couple people in the village. And if there's multiple mechanisms, and that also gives, I like what John said about giving, giving us multiple tools for enforcement. So I don't. I think the only piece is just making it clear what, maybe better understanding in what instances it would go to the Z B A. Like, what are, what are the specific parts that are? Parts that are, that would be that interpreted them like.
And also I think timeline too, right? I mean, like, how long does each of these processes? Take if it's gonna take.
And you that you get a period of time to remedy the condition and so um in terms of sourcing. Drawing sourcing, we can look at, we can look at other chapters in our code. I'm just trying to think about using your time judiciously, John, because we want you for the big brain, we want you to be. What are you thinking?
I'm trying to, other than operating the air, operating the short term rental without a permit. What are the violations would there be?
Uh, no smoke alarms.
But that would be caught in the inspection process.
What if, what if you have a um. Owner occupied permit and you go out of town. And your guess happen to throw a party and you get caught. And then. You know, the police get called and then the code enforcement officer gets told. You know, the this was the situation at the house that was causing a disturbance. Then you have. A real complaint and where a permit owner has uh violated their agreement.
Or if we have a hundred and eighty days or ninety days and they go over. But just as simple as that, if we're using Granicus and we see that they've rented out their place. You know, what is of two hundred days, what, what is our um, you know, road to. Fixing that.
John, under what, tell me the kind of scenario that you were thinking of when you made this suggestion.
I'm sorry, what what suggestion?
When you made the suggestion of including administrative remedies.
Right, right.
Example of what you think would appropriately go to ZBA in terms of a violation.
Well, I I I think it would, so basically, in in most cases, the ZBA. Anyone can appeal a building inspector's termination to the ZBA. So they may disagree with the building inspector, the building inspector. You know, I can't think of a scenario off the top of my head, but you know, that's, you know, they're gonna. Say that you're violating this section because of X, Y, and Z. And then the um, the property owner is gonna be like, no, I'm not, you know. I I disagree with you because of A, B, and C. And, you know, then I think it it becomes a code interpretation and that usually goes before the ZBA, so I I can't think of a. A specific scenario. Um, but a couple of the codes that I did look at, you know, they did have the village board. Kind of act as the um, or you know, the arbitrator to figure out.
Like that.
He said, she said, no, I don't think you guys want to do that.
And I think it's, it's, it is just, it's too vulnerable to arbitrariness, it's too. It's just, it's just, it's just rife with the potential for conflict. That's how, that's basically how we got here.
All right, so I'm I'm hearing John's suggestions, I feel like there's a couple steps. That could be given, the code enforcement cites an issue or a complaint. They, you know, the clerk issues a letter giving them thirty days to remedy the issue. Um, or they can appeal to the GVA perhaps to see if they actually are. Breaking the rules.
Or maybe it's staged.
Yeah, or it could.
Or it goes to the, maybe, right.
It would be nice if there were stages and, I mean, also leave it to the code enforcement officer to decide how serious it is. Because if someone, you know, left the lights on all night long or. Some small thing, but left the trash out on the curb for five days. Like, that may not be worthy of, like, losing your permit for the rest of the year or. Going before the ZBA, but being told thirty days to remedy the issue or even a week to remedy the issue would be reasonable.
So we got in the conversation about penalties. Greg offered insight that I had, that hadn't occurred to me before and I thought was really valuable. For small things like that, he said, you know. If you, u- under the current scenario where it goes to the court. If you are finding someone two hundred and fifty dollars and it goes before the judge. You're gonna have to, you're paying for, as a village, you're paying for court clerk, the justices time. Um, a pro- the prosecutor, the village prosecutor to come in in a case, so he said, you'll you'll never, his thought was, you're not gonna make. You're you're not gonna make enough to cover the cost in your fine, to cover the cost of prosecuting the fine, so move away from fines. What you and John are talking about gives an alternative. To a a remedy that's that's not a fine, but is not pulling the whole.
A clear process, we just need a clear process outline, so I have some ideas from what John's saying.
So you two can work together.
Work on, and this is specifically for permit holders, this is not. Fines for unpermitted people, just so everybody knows, like, this, this is, you know, finding a um. Process that allows us some nuance in in ensuring that everyone follows the rules of their permits.
Reg- yeah, regulation, regulation violations as opposed to operations without a permit, I mean, to me. I like that we have set that that far, very high. Because we we want people to be getting them. And I do think that an escalation and impact, an escalation and um consequence is a good thing. Right, when you get to multiple offenses, we start pulling. That's where it really hurts too, is losing the income.
I have one suggestion about the ZBA, just but I don't know if this is, right, but it seems like there's. A difference of um kind of appealing a denial of a permit, like the building inspector denies. There's something, does the inspection and then finds an issue and denies the permit and then.
Well, that automatically gets a, that automatically gets a remedy period, right? You don't pass inspection. Here are the things that you need to come into compliance with to pass your inspection. That gets, that gets a remedy period already, right?
But couldn't, couldn't someone try to appeal? I, and you're gonna figure it out, but it just seems like the ZBA stepping in on like operational enforcement and then. Making a judgment about what to do that the trash went out is so far from like.
That small would be more, I think, the code enforcement, like, just, there's your. Notice to remedy, most of the time I expect that that will be. A trigger and will take care of the problem, it's when there's a a major violation of your permit that. Where it'll have to go to the ZBA.
What are you thinking? You've been looking at stuff bubbling.
Well, I think there's, to Laura's, to Laura's point, there's. To get the permit, it's it's a fire and safety inspection, so unlike a building inspection where you have to meet. The permit that you, the out, you know, what you applied for, you know, I put it on a second floor edition and. It did exactly as I was, as I applied to do. Here it's a state code, you know, for a fire and safety inspection, so there's really no.
No variable.
Variable leeway in there, it's, you know, you pass inspection, you don't, and I can't think of any circumstance where someone's gone. You know, in the last five years gone to the ZBA because, and you know, a safety inspection. Was failed, you know, you don't have the alarm or you don't have the, the war, or probably, you know, the egress windows and. So I don't think there's much leeway there, you know, the other stuff that we're talking about is, you know, loud parties and.
Violation of the general rules.
Yeah.
Of your permit.
But, but so, John.
Yeah.
What's the, if we identify a category that goes to ZBA. What is the remedy, what is the consequence that that the ZBA would appropriately give? Right, they're not fining.
No, the the ZBA would, I guess, would only be involved if there was an interpretation issue. If somebody disagreed with the building inspector's interpretation or application of the code.
Yeah, yeah, I guess I'm not seeing then where there's a place for the ZBA other than. That. I I can see.
So here's, here's a scenario, what if the building inspector is like, all right, um, what. You've done or what your neighbors have reported, again, here's the, here's the hosted. Permit holder who goes out of town and Airbnbs while they're not present. And the neighbor complains and the code enforcement officer. Says, all right, you've you've clearly broken the agreement of the permit. And therefore, you're going to lose your permit allowance for the next six months. Then. John, the question for you is, are are we allowed to just allow the code enforcement officer to pass that? Judgment or does it need to be reviewed by a ZBA or justice court? To take someone, to revoke a permit?
Yeah, the the building inspector has administrative capabilities to revoke a permit. I mean, in most cases, the building inspector does have the ability to revoke permits. Um, it's gotta be, you know, set forth in the code, but.
So can you help us get to this point where we're setting forth these options? Properly, so that the first layers are code enforcement based and the more severe. Elements end up at the justice court.
Or just revoking.
Or multiple, yeah.
Just revoke, revoke the permits because it sounds cost inefficient to send it to court. So just revoke the permit if if you've you've been caught in violation.
Right.
I mean, if the person has a real issue, they may take us to court anyway.
So 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 we're authorizing, and the direction this conversation is taking, is now moving away from. The justice and. But giving the authority in this code for the code enforcement officer. To be able to do those things, the revocation power.
Yeah, I I think, like I said in the beginning, I think you should have various options of enforcement. So a lot of times, sometimes you do the administrative enforcement. And the building inspector will revoke the permit and the property owner will be like, I don't care, you know, and they're just gonna keep operating. You know, then, then you've got to go to justice, justice court or the other option is the village can actually, you know. Get some declaration or or, you know, get get some judgment from a, from another judge and basically say. Telling the property owner to stop operating it, and then if they're in violation of that, that judge's order, then they can get arrested for that. Um, so I I think it's just gotta be, is, the enforcement has to allow the village and the building inspector to. To take different avenues or or paths. Usually what they say um is administrative enforcement is usually the first. And I guess the less, the least painful and the most cost effective for the municipality.
Right.
Um, and then after that, then you can do, go either to local justice court. Um, or in some cases, like I said, you can seek some type of injunctive relief from the Supreme Court.
So I, this is what I was trying to avoid, like, getting into court over something that is not a criminal issue. Like, yes, you can annoy your neighbors, but like, we don't need to make it a major crime where like. You know, you called the court for it.
Well, I think that.
Well, that that would be at the discretion of the building inspector, you know.
I mean, that's, that's what I think is, if we're getting in repeat, if we're getting into repeat offenses.
It's crazy.
If you're getting into repeat offenses, I think we do have to have that option available to us, but I agree that starting at an administrative level. Makes more sense.
Yeah.
To have it, to have a middle step where 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 people do have an, an opportunity. And John, um.
Thank you.
Got distracted by the sneeze, I don't remember the question, it was about, oh, appeal. Um, in the case where we're using administrative action from code enforcement. Is it an article seventy eight that appeals that? If someone wanted to appeal a decision of the code enforcement officer?
They go to the ZB, well, for a zoning issue, they would go to the ZBA.
Yeah, but what if it's about, if it's about.
For, if this is a separate chapter. Then I guess you would go straight to an article seventy eight unless your code specifically said for short term rental chapter, the ZBA. Wouldn't, you know, interpret any. Um, or take any appeals from the building inspector's determination.
Doing appeal on this type of stuff myself.
It's really, I think it's a part of purchase from what.
Yeah.
Is their normal work, if they're. Addressing a party appeal. You know, there was a party and then they have to decide on whether the party happened or something like that.
Wait, how are you gonna?
How are they gonna do that? They're used to just like looking up.
Well, so think of it from, from the user point of view, like, I just got caught. I threw a party or my my renters threw a party, I ran out of town, I didn't think anyone would catch me. Uh, now I've gotten a letter and been told I'm gonna lose my permit. And I'm like, ah, I made a really bad mistake and I don't want to lose my permit. Uh, my two choices are either accept that I've lost my permit or go before. The village board or the ZBA board or some board and have them chastise me.
It's not the job of the ZBA to chastise.
Right, right, but, but. Or or the court, you know, whatever room of, like, somebody who says, all right, look, we have pictures from your neighbors. This is what your permit says, this is what the code says, having to go through that process and hear all of that come down on your head. I think is valuable, it will teach someone a lesson, we don't need to put them in prison and we don't need to call in lawyers, but.
I just think that's, that is more a, and if you're appealing a decision. It it more appropriately goes, I I think it more appropriately goes to justice than than to ZBA. It's just not in the ZBA wheelhouse to deal with, so.
Yeah, no, that's fair, I mean.
I don't think it could take months to make a decision, like I, just like given the, like, I I think that's a really, I think it's a difficult.
It's hard.
All right, so we don't spend all night, I think where we're landing is. Eliza is gonna draft some sort of administrative middle ground, which she'll work with John to to fine tune. Work for you, John?
Yes, yeah, I'm trying to look for an example right now, some, some good language, I think you want to kind of keep it broad enough. To give the building inspector flexibility as far as, you know, how he or she wants to enforce it.
Okay, so we'll come back to. The enforcement portion, we'll come back to the regulations portion based on that. The last big issue of change is. We had required onsite parking. Um, Eliza's proposing that, well, you originally proposed that not be required and that the advertisement. Encourage public transportation. An alternative, but I don't know that it's the right alternative, is if you can supply, there are a lot of, there are a lot of properties in the village that don't have. Driveways, so if you can supply off street parking, you must. If you, if you, that isn't an option, you need to communicate parking rules and regulations and encourage public transportation. Um. It, I don't know how folks feel about that, as John pointed out. Weeding out people without driveways reduces the number of opportunities for, for short term rentals.
It's just very unfair.
Exactly, I mean, we already have, right, we already have like a parking issue, right? I don't, I don't know what the answer is, but I'm just arguing kind of the other side, and now. There's. An additional car or two. For every hosted home, you know, on top of the car or two that that hosted home might have, now we're talking about. A lot, a lot of vehicles. Yeah.
No. Plenty of cars, regardless of whether they charge you a ton of money to bring them over or not. I stayed in a little place, they had guest parking. So if someone, you know, has one of these things, maybe there's a.
So if someone, you know, has one of these things, maybe there's a mechanism where they buy a guest parking permit for their guests, or maybe they have their resident parking permit anyway. You're allowed to have one for like a work person or come up with an idea for guests.
So where would where those folks in Antucket who don't have can't provide onsite parking, where do their guest gizmos get used? Where do the people go?
You just drive, I just drove around till I found something.
So you're paying for parking for extra parking, sort of sort of the way we charge businesses on Main Street for parking waivers. That's what it sounds like. It's a parking waiver.
Revenue source, an additional revenue.
Yeah. I mean, that's a little bit better. I still think like if you are allowed to live in a house without a driveway and own a car in this village, like.
That's different than than extending a commercial use in your home with a driveway.
Now that we have only, you know, hosted for half of the year or half of our month, we said, the only place where that hosted person's car goes away and is replaced by their guests is the one time use permit.
Right.
So in that case, I'd say the one time use permit doesn't necessarily need to have that requirement.
No.
The hosted, I would be open to considering like a waiver fee and something something like that.
A waiver fee versus.
But I still.
Parking permit.
No, no, the words they pay the waiver, they get a tag. In this case, you need the hang tag.
Yeah.
Type. At least that's what they had up there. And you just leave it on your, you know, Airbnb guests.
Is this a a matter of semantics between waiver and permit?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
No, 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 I'm just trying to understand. Okay.
But it doesn't, it doesn't do anything. It 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 solves the question of equity between houses that have driveways and don't and those that don't. It does not solve the overarching issue of additional vehicles in the village that need street parking.
Right.
And it's and it's really the biggest problem is down in the lower village, right? On streets like Garden. It's not, it's not up where I am. I don't have a driveway, but everybody else does and we don't compete for part for spaces.
But we're about to permit all of those with resident only permits.
Down here.
Yeah.
So 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 I'm saying it doesn't solve, it still creates, it doesn't solve the problem of where do we put additional cars? Because they're still going to have to go somewhere.
Metro north down there.
During the week or during the weekend.
We've been Airbnbing for years. Is your street clogged up by Airbnb?
I don't know. That's that's. I'm not, I'm not sure. We don't, we can't, right now, we can't quantify what cars parked on the street belong to. I mean, I suppose we could if we got really sneaky, right? Watching the cars. But you're, I think what you're saying is the cars that we're all that we're already dealing with the trap, the vehicle traffic and parking related to the existing short term rentals that we are operating without permits.
We're living with that right now and it's not causing a new a new problem. And we're working to address the issue of parking shortages in the lower, the little 90. So like, can we just do that over there and not over here? Like, why do we have to solve this problem in two places?
I wasn't suggesting solving it in two places. I was using the example of a part of the village where people don't have driveways and it's congested and a part of the village where people, some people don't have driveways and it's not.
I'm just thinking that if if people come for the day, they bring their cars and then they leave. The difference is that we're allowing people to stay overnight and nighttime parking is, I think, less congested. So in that way, like, I think it's not as big of a, the impact to think about is the overnight impact, but I think that there's less of it. Although I have driveway, so I don't search. And I say I don't search for overnight parking.
I've counted overnight parking and it's like, there's plenty. But no street in the village is like, there's nowhere to park overnight.
Well, then it makes me wonder that it leads me back in the direction that you suggested, which is if you don't have a driveway, you have to pay a premium for a permit for get for guests to use. I don't pay a premium, you have to pay a cost. Thoughts?
I mean, you're price of doing business.
And it is, you know, linear street on public streets is an asset, it's an asset and it has value. I could be persuaded if there were an offset, if there were a revenue offset, I could be persuaded to say not not no street parking.
I would, I would, I would ask, I would ask the ad hoc committee what they think. I mean, I want to hear from them on like, if the fees seem reasonable.
They're just gonna say no.
Again, we don't want to add fees on top of fees on top of fees to get to a place where, again, it's prohibitive. We don't want our fee structure to be.
No, but you also want to recognize that that the village as municipality has assets and one of them is linear feet of streets. And if it's being used, if it's being used to accommodate a commercial business, a commercial operation out of a home, that asset has value. Right. And it is a, it is a direct visitor related revenue source, right? It's not, it's not a resident revenue, resident payment. It's a.
And I'm not saying it should be $500, but it should, there should be some, you know, value to parking.
It's worth thinking about, too, that as we add charges, some of it is going to go to visitors, right? They're going to pass that fee on to the visitors and and if everyone has to pay, you know, everyone's paying these permit fees, so everyone in the village is going to be hosting their their overnight charge a little bit. That's the big concern. So they're not, just make the point.
The owner is the owner.
If I had an Airbnb and I was, you know, talking to the guest or, you know, I could, they could put it in the ad, you know, parking permit and the charge. So if you bring your car and you need that.
Yeah.
You know, we, while we do encourage you to take the train, if you do bring your car and you require a parking permit.
It's too easy to, we don't require permits with any other cars.
We're going to.
Okay, so when, so it works. And I, I was just gonna say otherwise, you couldn't enforce it. People could say, oh, I'm not gonna bring my car and then bring it and let them know.
Right? So 11 streets in the village. Catherine is in process of working on the the onboarding of the resident parking permit system on those streets. We hope that to be forthcoming, right?
Alone for the first?
Yes. So in in the lower village, there will, there will be a corollary with permits. Right now, there isn't one in other parts of the village because the enabling legislation was only written for those 11 streets.
Lower street, lower village is below 90 or below.
Below 90. I'm talking about below 90. Um, I I just, I think we can't, I think we can't. We have to think differently about parking and visitor parking than we ever have. And I personally support that idea. Others.
Um, just time.
Yes. So I'm trying to get, trying to figure out what we have consensus on to take forward and then the next.
I mean, I think the, you know, we're asking for an ad hoc committee to actually do some work and look at this. And these are things that we'd like to hear back from them on. But I do think a permit of permit waiver or whatever we're going to call it should be seriously contemplated if you are hosting.
So that's three of us. Is that something that you're interested in seeing written in a draft at this stage to be given to the committee to respond to?
Sure.
I I would, again, just say that maybe if, like, it's not a bad idea. If the permits for our residents are $25, like, what's the permit for a commercial use guest? And I don't have an answer to that. That seems right. Because I get your point, like, residents are paying rent, they're paying taxes to fix the streets. So our permits are cheaper. But what's the right number?
But that number two is not, that needs to be figured out.
Right, right. That's not in stone yet either. But that is just a.
I think the short, for me, the short answer is more than what residents pay.
Right.
Yeah.
And and plus, they're going to pay one time for the permit and it's going to be reused and reused and reused. But every guest that comes or every other guest that comes.
They might pass it along every.
Well, there's going to be a lot of us who come by foot, by train, because of the nature of our village and the train running.
We'll encourage them to do so more.
There's, you know, like, if you think about half the guests coming by train and half by car.
Maybe.
Something like that. I mean, we don't have any data, so we don't know, you know, like, but I don't want to be like, really harsh in these little pay ways that we're already doing like parking thing where people have to pay on Main Street and.
I don't see it harsh in petty ways. I see it as offsetting offsetting costs to our residents and providing a revenue source that we don't have.
But that was what the permit fees were supposed to do.
And they do. And and I think Catherine has raised a good, a good point for another possibility. And it may, it may be that where we have the number after we speak with the building inspector and gather other other numbers, it may be that we've got the number right with 750. But let's check to make sure that it's right and it can accommodate this scenario as well.
Yeah. What about shared driveways? I think there was, you know, some neighbors who share a driveway.
I do.
Um, I think that requiring someone to get a letter from their neighbor is like some way is very fair for the neighbors to share the driveway, but also an opportunity for like the petty neighbor fights to like one over, how do you, how do you keep it from being one person with power over the other?
I think in most cases, a shared driveway is it's actually impossible to have another vehicle in that shared driveway. I mean, unless you you asked very politely, you know, can I have? No, I can't, I cannot see.
This was a problem. This was a problem on, the reason this this is, it was in this code is that it was a real problem on Marion Avenue where there was short term rental in a shared driveway and it was a constant battle between the neighbors. And so I think that the effort to force going to your neighbor and having a conversation and saying, do you consent to use our shared driveway in this way, I think is important.
Except that if it's hosted in the in the if it's hosted, then the person who's hosting it in theory has a vehicle that's in their driveway spot. So there's not really another there's not another location. If it's like in an unhosted scenario, yeah, then you can have, you know.
I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying.
If you go to your neighbor and you say, I'm gonna, anytime I have guests, move my car and park on another street. So it's not in the way. And I promise you that I'll always be there and no one's ever gonna park in the right of way. Will you sign this consent form? I mean, if you have a good relationship with your neighbor, it's fine.
But why would the neighbor, in theory, if I'm, okay, well, I'll just use myself an example. Very welcome. So, uh, we share a driveway. If I were doing Airbnb in my home, we have a vehicle, well, we have, this is, we have two vehicles. Then we have, we would have to find a parking spot for our two vehicles to accommodate our guests.
Guests. It would make sense to tell your guests not to bring a car.
Right. Let's say the, right. But if they did.
We've changed the calculus here.
Why would, but my point is, why would then my neighbor, why would they have to know that there's a vehicle in there that's not in my, in my part of the shared driveway, not my own vehicle? You get what I'm saying?
Yep.
Like, why is it their business?
Right. And and why does your neighbor have a right to now keep you from getting a permit that will support your income needs or whatever? You know, like, that we've, we've, I think, proposed a possibility of saying, like, without that, you can't get a permit. And I don't think that that is very fair because neighbors don't always get along and unfortunately, they should, but unfortunately, they don't. And in your perfectly lined up, laid out example.
Well, I mean, our, yeah, but I mean, even our, so on a lot of these streets, truly on the, on these older homes where they do have some, in some cases, some driveways are split down, split down the middle or there's, it's one space. There's not opportunity to park the car in any like offshoot. So they just kind of work it out. I think it would be a lot in that case. I think asking for or going to your neighbor is a polite thing to do. But then also think that that having additional permit is also the right thing to do.
But that's, this is what's shifting my my thinking and all of this because that scenario that scenario that I described initially was unhosted. And we are probably reduced by by focusing in on just hosted, we're probably, probably already creating a, well, no, a parking, a parking conundrum because it will, right? The old version was the host will be gone, the, there's a spot. Now we're saying the host will be there and the guest. So we're, we're pushing regardless of whether you have a driveway, we're pushing cars onto the street in this scenario.
Don't, we already have somewhere in the code that says you're not allowed, or isn't there laws that say you can't block your neighbors egress, ingress on, if you have a shared driveway? If you have a right of way on a shared driveway, like, isn't that already in another place in the code? What, when I spoke with Charlotte Mountain, her advice was, don't make extra laws that enforce other problems in here. Focus on what your permit does and what the rules are of hosts.
Let's ask the lit, the attorney, John, what it, in a, in a shared driveway scenario, what governs access?
Honestly, it's really a private property dispute and municipalities really shouldn't get involved or in between.
Okay, all right. Okay, I'm seeing the logic. It took me, it took me time to get to the logic. Sometimes I need to hear it a few times before I get there. So in that case, the way you had it drafted the first time, which did not require the notary, but did make plain that you must not black, block, your guests must not block access. Maybe that's enough.
Yeah. It's like, let, let the actual laws do their job.
And he brought up a really good point about parking though. Just now, that a lot of, a lot of driveways are just one spot. So if.
We're really pushing cars on the street anyway.
Why, why require the people who don't have a parking, who don't have a driveway when the consequence is the same for a lot of.
That's, that's exactly where my brain was going next is perhaps because we are, because we are focusing on hosted and we're going to drive cars regardless, in that permit fee, building into that permit fee should be the consideration of the value of a parking space.
We're not adding any parking spaces. So this is always been a problem with the.
They're not literally adding parking spaces, but what you are doing is renting the linear feet of a municipal street for a for a commercial purpose.
Parking impact fee.
A parking impact fee. Exactly. Exactly. So we just need to make sure we have the permit number right is the point as we come around all this. Thank you for talking through that. That makes sense to me now. Okay, so that was that particular, we're almost to nine. I just want to look at the text really quickly to see if there, I think we managed to hit most things. Um, I think we need to work on the definition of event. Definitions need to be alphabetized. That's a minor thing. You need to work on definition of event a bit. Nonoccupancies tricky. I made a suggestion in future. Tweets raised the point of taking out the references specifically. The tweet, tweets raised the point of taking out the references, specific companies, but instead referring to rentals provided by an online or other marketing marketplace for lodging, so that if Verbo goes under, our code is still broad enough.
Yep, that sounds good.
Uh, we're coming back to the discussion on consecutive nights for the unhoseded, the short, one-time, one-time unhoseded. We're coming back to one hundred and eighty. Standing to be one, we've covered.
Oh.
Yep. Agent, we still need, if the one-time short terms are unhoseded, we still want an agent.
Oh.
Um. We have to come back to occupancy. Greg had some ideas for tying occupancy limits back to definitions of bedrooms. Did you find something?
There was something, yeah, in fact, it's one of, it's either Irvington or Cornwall. Um, where it says no more than three people in a bedroom.
We had that before. So our previous code had those, those limitations of, you know, how many people per bedroom and only this many people in the house. Um, when we spoke with Charlotte Mountain about that, her main issue was, A, like, you're now separating children from adults, what defines a child? It gets very like, what if a family of six, like, now can't come? So those things shouldn't be in there. Um, and there are already blanketed rules of how many people can sleep in a bedroom.
That's, that's why he's saying, use, let's, let's look at the language and tie it back to those.
Well, then, if you have a six-bedroom house and you, by, by regulation can put four people in each bedroom, do we want a house with that many people visiting?
What we talked about was up to your, the limit that you establish of eight.
Okay. Is eight the right number?
I took your point about a family with more than two children.
Yeah.
Is it the right number for the amount of people who can be?
The top, the top end of.
You know, it's like, it's like one of the buildings across the street, you know, having like
Brazilian people.
Eight people sleeping there on shift, you know, instead of.
Um, his point was, tie it to bedroom and establish a max. And Eliza put forward eight. I'm comfortable with eight. It is so long as, so long as the, that the occupancy is allowed, that, that allow, that amount of occupancy is allowable in the space.
Right. Well, so he knows what those numbers are. We don't have to write it in here. That rule is already made somewhere else, right?
We don't have to remake, remake the rule. He's saying, reference it.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense.
So we'll come back to that. We need his help on that. Um, this is a big one that we need to come back to on another evening. This current zoning code does not allow the use of accessory buildings as dwellings. So that would be, have to be a change in both places if we were to go in that direction. It's too late to start that conversation tonight, but putting a pin in that one. Um, and actually, the way to handle this, since one thirty-four is being modified, is maybe just leave out accessory structure. We don't have the capacity under zoning right now to extend STRs into accessory structures, is what I'm saying. So leave that portion out for now. It can be modified af, if there are changes in one thirty-four that would allow it, but right now we can't do it. Do you, do you understand what I'm saying, John? Can you explain this? You got it? Okay.
Yes. It was cross, cross-references, correct?
No, I'm saying, right now, one thirty-four does not allow accessory buildings to be dwellings, so we should reference to accessory buildings for now.
Correct. Yeah, cuz that would be inconsistent with one thirty-four now.
And if, if it changes in the future on one thirty-four, then this can change.
Yeah, then you gotta make sure if you wanna do that to cross-reference and update this one.
So we're pulling out the consent portion related to parking. And under T. Um. We have a desk permit procedure to modify it for your, for whenever they come in, and you're out from there. Jeff is gonna check with, um, our insurance company. I believe the five hundred thousand dollar recommendation for liability came from Kieran. Um. Under one hundred dash six B C. Lucy, my recommendation was to leave the language broad, so that if there is, there are outstanding violations in any of our sections of our code, right, not just building and. So let me, so that if there were outstanding historic district violations or et cetera, that would bar you from proceeding permit. Um. I think that's everything. My brain is pretty fried. You know, we need to work on the violations and enforcement. The other, under violations and enforcement, as you're working with John on cleaning it up and creating sort of categories, the original code had four people operating without a permit, that the guests would have to be out in three days. I personally think it should be twenty-four hours if you're operating without a license, without a permit.
Yeah.
Um. Is that a sort of general consensus?
Yeah, three days, that could have been, you know.
It's a whole rental.
Four days, yeah, and then that's.
Okay, so I feel like we've made a lot of groundwork. Is there a lot of progress? Is there anything else that folks wanna discuss tonight? Have we hit the things we needed to hit? Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Um, I'm sure the trustees have had their issues addressed. Okay, so now, I don't know what publicly have left, who might like to speak, the public in the room. We'll start with you. Are there any comments that you would like to make?
No.
Okay. Um, do we have any, if you are on Zoom, I wish to speak, can you indicate your hand?
No. Worked it.
Okay. Gosh, right on. Okay, so what do you think is a reasonable turnaround for us to come back to this discussion?
Are we?
We need to make the edits that we've discussed tonight. And, and make sure that we're all good with them before we go on, committee. Two weeks? Okay. What do we have in two weeks? Two weeks is. Of the DCI. But I think that by that point, we've done the major discussing tonight, we can just review. Okay?
Hmm.
Okay, great. So, moving on to the, um, business items we have. Um, unfortunately, one of our highway crew has a broken arm. It was a non.
Do we need John? Do you need John?
I don't think so. Done. I think we're, I think we're good now.
All right. I just.
Thank you very much for, for sticking it out with us. It was exceedingly helpful to have you here live.
No, thank you. It was, it was helpful for me to understand where you guys are coming from. And I just circulated something from the Department of State about short-term rentals that I found. It was some PowerPoint presentation and they provided some examples, so hopefully that'll help you guys. And, um, yeah, I'm, I'm trying to find something as far as good enforcement language, um, to cover what you guys want.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
All right, we'll need, we'll need to talk about schedule tomorrow.
Sometime.
We'll figure out, we'll figure out scheduling. But if we aim to cir, to circulate it among us in the next two weeks, so we can look at it. Cuz maybe we won't even need to discussion, discuss it again before it, I don't know, let's see how it goes. Now, we should discuss in public session, there's comments that get made. I mean, the changes that get made first. Um.
That's like, just next steps, there's, obviously follow-up meeting, they're selecting the ad hoc committee.
Yep. Yeah, well, so we're giving them through Wednesday. So it'll be after that.
We'll have to send something over to Parkland County Planning.
After, yes.
So, just.
All of that, all of that comes after this initial stage. Okay. Oh, so what, unfortunately, one of our highway crew members broke his arm playing softball, was not on the, on the job site, but um, he, it's a bad break and we don't know how long he's going to be out at this stage. He, you earn paid time off days by the quarter, right?
During your first year of employment, yes, you get a lot of Q each quarter. So you earn five days each quarter. He is, in the end of August, will reach his one-year anniversary. He's out of PTO days, he's used what's been a lot of to him so far. He's asked the board to advance him ten days from PTO. He'll earn another five days at the end of May, and then at the end of, um, come September first, when he's his anniversary, he'll have twenty-five days. So he's asking to borrow against what will be, have coming.
Borrow against his own time to help him, to, to help, help him have some paid time during his recovery. Um, I, I am comfortable with this. If he, if he were to leave the job before he pay, earns and pays back his paid time off, then it becomes a reimbursement question?
To deduct it from his final check. And we frame it to him, we can frame it to him. It was done for me, I know, five years ago, where I, in my first year, I was in the hospital. Um, you know, the board advanced me five days to make up for PTO days I hadn't earned yet. On the condition that if I had left before I had earned those five days, I would be responsible for many years ago.
And you're still here. I'm, I'm comfortable with that structure. It's got a family to take care of. Um, does this need to be a vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Okay, so, oh, so we are, we are proposing to forward to this employee.
Advance him ten days.
Advance him ten days of paid time off on condition that were he to leave the position prior. The final paycheck would reflect the value of those days still owed.
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Hi. And we, um, we should, speedy recovery. We just, we just got everybody rolling, but we have the, the, uh, part-time guy did start. He was here today, he was here last Thursday, worked his bum off. So we've at least got two days of another body. And we're trying to see if we have opportunities to try to bring somebody on an attempt basis to cover this period. Um, we should figure out if we can make that work numbers-wise, so we can keep the momentum going. Okay, um, next is filling of vacancies. Uh, we're required under village law to have an audit committee, um, to review the bills. And an insurance and risk management committee that looks at those items. Didn't hear back from you today, so I haven't actually asked you this question. Um, we probably just missed text. My recommendation with fill the vacancies left by trustee Curdo, my recommendation is for Laura to come on as audit, um, working with checks and because you are a business owner who has, um, knowledge of uh, risk management insurance. It is painful one month a year. We did it last year, so there's an experienced person who did it.
What do you do? Strong words.
You go review coverages to make sure the coverages are where they need to be. It's, it's, it's done cooperatively with Michelle and with our insurance rep, it's not by yourself.
Oh, okay.
But there needs to be. Would you like to add anything to that description?
Yeah, Michelle's not involved in it at all.
Yeah, Michelle's not involved.
Oh, good.
So Jeff and Kieran. And Kieran has been our representative for quite a long time. He knows our coverage as well. Okay, does that need a motion and vote, or am I simply appointing?
For the committees that need to vote.
Okay, so I make the motion to appoint trustee Bozzi to audit committee and trustee Fatty to insurance and risk management. All in favor?
Right.
I opposed. Other than Catherine.
I'll just have more go.
That's right. The next is, is areas of work. This is not anything driven by village law. This is the way we have, as a board, decided to structure ourselves and work areas. Um, I've asked trustee Bozzi if she'll step up in water and sewer and highway maintenance, garbage and recycling. And she has been willing to do that. What I asked you to do, but I didn't hear back, so you may decline, is if you would be willing to come on in budget and financial management. Um. Again, this is a, a chunk of the. This is a chunk of the year, uh, when we get through the budget process and I, you know, as a business owner and a person who's been through this multiple times as a trustee, he's seen the most likely candidate. Um, I am pleased to say, I'm pleased to say that, that trustee Curdo, um, has agreed to, to continue to act as a, a budget and financial management advisor to us. So you can knock on the door if you have questions. Um, he needs to get through some healing and then he's very willing to serve as advisor. Okay, thank you. So those, those aren't votes, that's just me asking.
And can I just add, are there multiple people that are these committees of one?
There are multiple.
Okay, so who else is on water and sewer and highway?
Tweets and me.
On both of them.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And the budget and financial management.
And then you're, I, and then you're the other half of audit, right?
And so maybe the first time that you do this, um, she can, Laura can, can shadow you and you can walk her through the process.
Yeah, great. And I know that I'll talk with Michelle.
Yeah.
Also.
And it will help you learn, it will help you learn the budget and how we spend and what our primary areas of responsibility are pretty quickly.
Yeah.
Okay. And you'll get, you'll get, like I said, you'll get to know the vendors and, and when something looks out of whack, you'll know.
I was shocked to know that a tree cost three hundred and five dollars today.
To buy a tree?
To buy a tree, one tree.
Which is, which is why the tree committee tries really hard to get donations of trees.
And then what are we doing with all those flags?
They were replacing the flags on the.
Seventeen hundred dollars in three by five flag.
They are replacing the flags on the flag poles.
Good.
Um, nice. I hope that.
You hope the poles on Main Street.
Will they be up for Memorial Day?
They're being put up this week.
Right.
But the, the flags that were up were tattered. Um, they've been, they've been there for quite a long time and needed replacing.
They're up from Memorial all the time now, and then like have I watched?
I don't remember how long, I don't remember how long they stay up.
Yeah, it's what we could, it's when Bugsy can make the arrangements to have, you know, somebody come down with the cherry picker.
Win them out of.
Yeah.
But it's for Memorial Day to, to when they get tattered.
I usually, oh. Got it. I think that it's Labor Day, we'll have to ask Bugsy to be sure, because as soon as we start talking about it, my, I question my memory.
Um, speaking of Labor Day, I know it's not on us, but is there anything, because people are asking, is there anything on the website that refers them at least to the DFW or to whoever's?
Oh, for the Memorial Day parade?
Parade.
That's a good idea. We don't have anything up, but we should do.
Yeah. I mean, people are asking.
Um. I don't know if they have a graphic or not, but we can at least put the information out. Um, and the, and the trustees are invited to march in the parade as a group of public officials with the town. And sometimes the congressman shows and.
Is on actual Memorial Day?
Is on this, on the Monday day.
Yeah.
Okay. Lineup is at eight thirty at the bottom of Main Street. And it's actually really, I think it's really beautiful and really touching, because we stop at multiple, the cemetery's on the way and do a small, small recognition at each ceremony, and then it ends at the big cemetery on Peak, Peak Skill Road with, um, a larger ceremony. And there are usually scouts and it's quite nice.
So we finish up here, I gotta go put a kit to bed.
Yes, we absolutely can. We're just about to the end of the item. Nope, approved bills. Who's making the motion?
Uh, motion to approve batch number sixty-four seventy-one in the amount of one hundred, one hundred and five thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy cents.
Second. All in favor?
Right.
Hi. And we have another public comment session if anyone wants to comment on our flags.
No.
We have a question.
Who did?
Hi, Michael. What's up?
Can you hear me?
You're on mute, Mike. You're still muted.
You can't hear your own accent.
Good demonstration. I was demonstrating how incoherent I am at this point. I just thought, rather than talk to you now, could I get ten or fifteen minutes from you in the morning and it might make more sense, cuz my head will be more clear and and, and we have a summary of, yes, from the mayor, uh, in, we have a summary of what tonight meant.
Yes, my head will be clearer too.
Okay, so around tenish?
Tomorrow is Thursday, we have, uh, department head meetings at nine thirty, so it either has to be before nine thirty or it has to be later in the afternoon. Why, why don't we talk after the meeting?
Okay.
Just to set a time. We'll talk after the meeting to set a time.
All right, good.
Okay. There are motion to adjourn?
Motion, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Can I take a picture? Cuz I need a picture.
Yeah, we're getting there. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm, I'm here for like an internship, so I need a picture.
Oh, great. What's the internship?
Oh, well, I'm doing it at the PCNR. I'm like a.